Ladies and gentlemen, we're now in the hands of our assistant city clerk.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, October 29th. We have approval of minutes of October 22nd.
Any issues, anyone? Okay.
Appeals, we have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at 11:31 Dolphin Island Parkway on February 2nd from 11:30 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. At Seals Park.
That's, um, let me just hold it off for one week there.
At Seals Park on November 3rd from 3:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. At 254 St. Anthony Street on March 2nd from 12:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. And at 254 St. Anthony Street on March 4th from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Public hearings, today is the public hearing to declare the structures at 611 Ives Avenue, 1210 Alba Street, 1315 Brooks Avenue, 2054, also known as 2056 Buckle Road South, 2377 Sansucci Road, 809 South Washington Avenue, and 2306 Dog River Drive North, public nuisances and order them demolished.
Mr. President, Mr. David in, Mr. Pan.
Good morning, Mr. President, I just have updates on two items real quick. The first one's going to be 611 Ives Avenue. The property owner did get a permit and we'd like to permanently table that to give them time to repair their structure. The same thing is going to be for the last item from municipal enforcement, which is 2306 Dog River Drive. The owner of that property also has a repair permit that has been issued and we'd like to table that permanently to give them time to repair their structure. Is there any questions?
Mr. Pan?
No, thank you, David, I was just about to ask you about the 16, I mean 611 Ives Avenue. So, thank you, I'm glad I was able to get that from you.
Oh, yeah, it's a positive outcome, it's good to see.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of an alley adjacent to property located at 1001 through 1003 Oak Street. Public hearing to determine whether the downtown Mobile Business Improvement District should be continued, modified, or terminated. Presentation of petitions and other communications. Sandra Racker will invite the council and mayor to the dedication of an American 250 marker at the Richards D.A.R. House. Apostle Valenia Green, abuse and neglect towards the poor, disabled, and homeless. Renita Smith, concerns regarding a variance on her property at 311 Glenwood Street. John Young, Men United Against Violence Fall Campaign. Amy Jones, question, questions about the city's plan to address the coyote population. Pat Law, a city contractor damaging her property. And Reggie Hill, Department Protocol, Board Protocol, request for updates and request for amendment.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Dave's.
We probably need someone from the city there to talk about the coyotes. If there's general interest in that issue.
Uh, this Glenwood Street, if that's in your district, uh, that's two, Carol.
I'm gonna say, yeah.
Are you, you aware of what's going on there? And what about Ms. Law?
Not aware of that either. Uh, I'm assuming she may be talking about now street.
Yeah, that's. Yeah. Interested to know about this, um, the variance, uh, about the 311 Glenwood Street. Now, just before she come down, if we can have someone from the municipal.
What side of the street is on?
Yeah. I don't have no, uh, let me see.
She's asking for a variance?
No, she went, she went before the Board of Adjustment. And she says that they granted her a variance to have a car lot on her property. And, but now she's being told that that's not the case.
The property's right next to MH3. And it's in between government and airport boulevard. I just don't know all the details.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Good morning. Um, Ms. Smith did in fact receive a variance for 311 Glenwood Street, but essentially, uh, one of the conditions stipulated that there would be no storage of vehicles, uh, at the site. So she could basically complete the administrative functions, sale, whatever, uh, of vehicles, but one of the conditions said that she could not actually store vehicles at that property.
But, uh, the only clarification I needed is, did this go before the planning commission or before the Board of Zoning Adjustments?
Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Well, it's always been my understanding that anything that goes before the BZA goes to Circuit Court for appeal and not to us.
You're correct.
So why, my, I, I didn't want to say this until later, but why she come to see us?
I, I don't know.
So we have no banding, uh, we have no strength of law here whatsoever.
Correct.
So I mean, somebody else needs to tell her that, it'd be better if the city attorney told us, told her that than us. That's why I was just sitting here saying that, you know, the details are kind of quirky until I know all, what she's asking.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Resolutions held over, 011011, authorize Go Mesa Grant Agreement with Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. 011012, authorize Tax Abatement Agreement with Greenfield Environmental Multitrust. 011013, authorize Amendment to Agreement with Smith, Duke, and Buffalo for audit services. 081014 and 1015 are approving purchase orders to emergency equipment professional for a ladder truck for the fire department and to Nomic Networks for subscription to Nomic Insight Network Communications. 211016, authorize contract amendment with Moffett Nickel for Mobile Riverfront Redevelopment Project. 601017 and is authorize settlement agreement and release of claims. And 011018 is authorize agreement with Chris Francis Tree Care to provide citywide tree maintenance and removal.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
I was looking at these, these bid sheets for Chris Francis Tree Care. You know, they got on here five dollars an hour for a dump truck? And twelve dollars an hour for a grapple? I mean, they can be able to perform these services for five dollars an hour? I don't think you can operate a dump truck for five dollars an hour.
That's a million dollars, Ben.
Don Rhodes, when you compare it to other bids, and even though those raise anybody's flag and read that, that's something, there's a way to look at it, but he says.
That plus the yardage fee.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I know, uh, I just, the way this contract works is, it's, so we're basically setting aside a million dollars and we're sort of just getting some generalized pricing. And then this contractor would be, say, dispatched to a site, right? You know, just based on 311 demands or needs. And, um, I, I just want to make sure that we're getting all that we can out of it, you know, that it's not, say, bidding high on items that we're going to use the most and then nothing on the others, or very low on the others in order to win the bid. And then they go out and the ones that we dispatch, the hi, at the highest rate, they're actually, say, getting double, like on a knuckle boom, you know, the nearest close bidder was forty dollars an hour and they're at ninety dollars an hour. So do we have adequate protection to make sure that we're going to get all that we can out of this million dollars?
So one of the things that we also are picking up is the invoice on the back end. So we're having, we're checking all of those that come in and how they're being invoiced. So we are going to make sure we're managing, we will be managing the contract.
When you dispatch somebody, do you say, um, hey, I need you all to send out, you know, a grapple truck, three field supervisors, and a lift operator?
No, that, he determines that.
It's up to them, it's their discretion.
Yes, we determine, hey, this is what needs to be done, he go assess it, and he, he determines what he needs to do that job.
Okay, but if they say, hey, we, we needed, you know, sixteen field operators on this one, you guys will have the ability to say, hey, look, tell me why you had sixteen field operators?
Yes, that's why we assess each invoice that comes in monthly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinances being introduced, 41054, ordinance to amend section 41.5 loitering in parks or playgrounds of the city code. 55055, ordinance to amend Article 5 panhandling of the city code. 57056, ordinance to amend section 57.73, obstructions on sidewalks of the city code.
Could we just get someone just to briefly, just to go over those three items, Forrest, please?
Just, just to, we'll talk the loitering on the, um, the public parks and playgrounds. Basically, uh, we are codifying what's already in existence. The parks have, all have posted signs when they open and close. Uh, this is just codifying, uh, that furthermore so they'll, it's a, it's a, there's an ordinance saying that they close it at dark or when that's stated, but the signs. The second one, uh, is the, um, one with respect to sidewalks. The last time that one was written, it discusses, uh, cotton, wood, and carts and merchandise on the sidewalks. It hasn't been updated in years and we're updating it, um, for that. And the, uh, the panhandling one is actually, panhandling has been, been approved by the Supreme Court as protective free speech. Uh, we are, um, working with that and basically outlaw, looking to curb behaviors with aggressive solicitation, and it's, panhandling is not even mentioned in, in the ordinance. And I'll link current inlet, Kendall.
So, good evening, good morning, counsel. So, um, just to, to put the counsel and others at ease, this is, these ordinances are not designed to criminalize the homeless. We know there are many, uh, other cities and states that are issuing out ordinances, and I just want to put you guys at ease knowing that this is to address a public safety issue, but also on the side in, in regards to, to the homeless and unhoused community, this will provide us an opportunity to engage those individuals who find themselves possibly sleeping, uh, in parks and things of that nature. Um, we are not trying to criminalize the homeless, that is not what this is about. It creates us an opportunity to engage those individuals who are not, uh, receptive to receiving services from our outreach team. It will give us an opportunity to, uh, help them be a part of our front-end diversion program that we are instituting to address any of those, uh, situations that may, that may come up with regards to these ordinances.
Question?
When, when you say opportunity to engage, how will that engagement be done?
So our outreach team is, of course, police officers. So that provides them an opportunity to be connected to those services that they need. A lot of them don't understand what services are available to them. So this engagement creates that opportunity. It's not to take them to jail, that's an opportunity for them to be diverted to those resources that can benefit them in the situation that they're in. So the only way we can get that engagement possibly is through, if we find them sleeping in a park, is not to arrest them. The first option is to be diverted to a place that will provide them the needed service. And we've reached out and spoke with our community partners and they are on board with this, with this diversion plan.
And if they refuse to be diverted to go somewhere else?
If they refuse to be diverted, then, uh, that's at the hand of that police officer that, that has them in custody.
In custody or detained?
Detained, yes.
Yeah.
We got, there's an ongoing stretch from Broad to Jackson Street where there are five spots, five blanket cots, and about thirty people that are on the private property side in the grass down there now, as opposed to being in the right of way and on the sidewalk. How does this ordinance help us alleviate that issue? From the Mabbe Bend down to the corner of, what is that, Claiborne and, uh, and, uh, Congress, I think.
That is an issue that is actually ongoing. We are in discussion with Waterfront Mission, uh, who owns the property right there on Congress in Washington, uh, discussing with them ways that we can kind of clean that area up in terms of getting those individuals inside of the shelter to receive the services that are available to them. And again, it's, it's all about engagement. The more we can engage these individuals, the more we can provide them the services that they need, the more we can create the trust that needs to be created in order for them to be receptive to the things that we have in place for them. So when we, when we engage these individuals, we meet them right where they are. Everybody that is unhoused and homeless, they're homeless or unhoused for their particular reason. And the only way we can get to the bottom of it is we have to engage them.
Uh, the key word is engagement. When I read what was given to us, there's nothing that legally allows us to engage anyone when they're on private property. So again, how do we address the issue on Congress Street when they're on the private property side and not on the sidewalk or in the city right of way? And, and that's a big problem up there. If, if you ride down there today and you see they moved behind the fence and now they're on the private property side, because the owners only there maybe once a month or so, and they're also on the school board property down the street, well, not school board property anymore, but that's it, and they're also going, and they're on the private property side of Bishop State. The question is, is how do we engage when they're not in the city right of way or on the sidewalk, because the ordinance doesn't do that? So how do we add something that allows us to do that?
Uh, in that regard, don't know what we would add, but as of right now, if there is a situation like that, the residents can reach out to us and we can go and have a conversation with, with those individuals, not, not for, uh, no other reason, but to see how we can help and assist.
Paul, can, can you guys look and see if there's any type of wording? This is the first read, so this will be between now and next week, that we might be able to add that may help us address some of those.
Paul and I can get together, because as you mentioned, that is correct. So we do not have the authority to engage from the private aspect of it. So we can see if we can come together without legal minds to be creative, to see if there's something that can be done to address.
Yeah, but without infringing on the property on the line.
That's correct.
Okay.
Jim. Mr. Dave, then Mr. Rucker.
Yep. On the sidewalk ordinance, 5773, the, the first paragraph, some paragraph one, that, I think there's, it doesn't make any sense. I think there's some language missing or something in there. I wish y'all would check that.
What does it say?
It says, "No person who walks, stands, sits, lies, or places an object in such a manner as to intentionally block passage by another person, or require another person to take evasive action to avoid physical contact, or who after being ordered to move by law enforcement officers remains in or on any public sidewalk in such a manner as to block or impair the movement of pedestrians." Period.
Oh, so, yeah, it, it's missing the.
Well, I, I, it's, it's missing something.
Shall not do these things, basically.
And it starts with no person, it should say any person. Uh, anyway, there's just.
Any person who does, then is in violation.
Is in violation, but, so I, I would just ask y'all to go back and look at that, because
And I was just going to do, speaking of obstructing the sidewalks and things, I know something was mentioned about putting signs and things out, blocking the sidewalks. We had a lot of problems with that in, uh, commercial areas, I know, when they were putting their sandwich boards out and things and blocking the sidewalks. But we do have a problem with, um, sometimes it's individual private vehicles, or sometimes it's business vehicles that go and park on the sidewalks. And this has been a very difficult thing to try to police and prevent. Uh, when these big heavy vehicles go and they park on the sidewalk for whatever they're doing, eventually it cracks the sidewalks. And then the city has to come back around and repair the sidewalks. But what we've started doing, of course, is trying to get said utility or whoever it is to, to come back and make the repairs, because they've been parking there and they are responsible for that. So, so that's good, but it still happens a lot, and we can't police them all. We also have individuals in neighborhoods who don't want to park on the street, maybe they don't have room in their driveway, they park on the right of way, including the sidewalk. That's a zoning violation. We have one inspector. We can't get them out to police everywhere. I, I'm looking for some sort of a solution to try to get it across to people that you do not park on city sidewalks. You know, and how best we can do that?
We'll look into this, the ordinance would cover that it's blocking a sidewalk, it's not just downtown, it's anywhere, so we'll look into that and we'll talk with the chief about.
Yeah, yeah, if there was a way to involve the police officers, because there are more of them patrolling on a daily basis than one zoning inspector that tries to go citywide.
Absolutely. So, again, the, these, the ordinances are not, um, geographically restricted, they cover, they encompass the entire city.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, the, theoretically, they could be addressed, and as we educate the, what's, if they're passed, when we educate the police officers on how the enforcement, we will educate not just district, you know, one or three, or District 103, we'll, the entire, uh, police force will be able to enforce these.
Alright. Madam Clerk?
Consent resolutions being introduced, 371019, 1020, and 1021 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Tao Hot Pot Barbecue on Airport Boulevard, for issuance of a retail beer table wine off premises only license to Wawa on Schillinger Road South, and for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Eminence Promotions Tough Man on Cody Road North. 401022 through 1028 are declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 601029 and 1030 are approving award of special bonus to the City Clerk's Office Employee of the Month and the Administrative Services Employee of the Month. CIP resolutions being introduced, 011031, authorize agreement with Forrest Daniel and Associates for Fire Station number 19, design, $187,439.40. Resolutions being introduced, 011032, authorize agreement with Hughes 360 Services to provide storm drainage ditch cleaning services, Elaine Drive, Forrest Glen Drive, and Anderson Drive, $225,000. 011033, authorize agreement with Hughes 360 Services for strong, storm drainage ditch cleaning services on Wilkins Road, $250,000. 011034, authorize construction services agreement with Whitespinner Construction, $100,000.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds?
This, um, this agreement, uh, how are they going to be utilizing this? Or how, how's the city going to be utilizing this service?
You talk, I don't know. This is Whitespinner? It's, um, we're getting their construction management, um, retaining them for that, for two, two different projects. One of them is looking at the expansion of the parking deck at the cruise terminal. It was built to go up two levels and expand, uh, with the possibility of getting another cruise ship, uh, being able to park at least 750 more cars. The other one is to look at the animal services or building the animal shelter, uh, to look at the value engineering of that particular project or alternatives to that.
Okay, uh, I see on here there's this, uh, design contract for a fire station, and, um, that's, I'm going to be spending district for CIP money on this fire station. I- is there a possibility to utilize these construction services through Whitespinner to, say, expedite that project, so that we can actually get it done here sooner rather than later?
Uh, right now, the agreement's just on the two projects I named, uh, but, but yeah, they offer that service for whatever projects we want to get up to.
Yeah, in, in the contract, doesn't name many specific projects, I don't believe.
Do you know?
Task.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on that, on the, uh, fire station design, how quick can we get that fire station replaced? I, I'd like to try to see it done before the end of this term, if, if possible.
Okay.
This term? That's a big ask.
Yeah.
That's a big ask.
Exactly. Yeah, it's one of those flat roof, you know, all worn out.
Mr. Mayor?
We should not have designed another. Fire station from the ground up. We ought to be able to take drawings and modify them. Now, how we transition from, going from ground zero to selecting the design firm and doing that, you know, according to the steps that we got to follow, uh, I don't know, we'll have to get somebody legal to, to say, how do we choose someone that's already designed it? Uh, we'll have to look at the previous contracts, and then it's a matter of, you know, putting it out for bid. Um, typically, it would take longer than that, um, but it may be, if we adopt one of the designs that we already have, it may not. But that's just, that's shooting from the hip, and so we'll just have to get into it and see.
That's a professional services contract, right?
It should be.
That's a professional services contract.
Yeah.
So selection is totally different. Yeah, so that's a, that's a quick fix. Question, uh, Whitespinner Construction Management, is this construction management or is this design management?
It's the, uh, construction management side of the Whitespinner Company, so they, they won't be able to bid on this, any of the work.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question, I mean, because if memory serves me correct, they built that.
They did.
They built it, so they can't be on both sides of it.
That's right, they built the original, but they also have all the plans on how to expand and.
Well, it was originally supposed to be, it was originally supposed to be two stories taller than what it is now.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
081035, 1036, 1037, and 1038 are approving purchase orders to Quick Buildings for portable building for Pine Hill Recycling Center, $78,804. To SHI International Corporation for iPad Pro Tablets for Bill Mobile, $21,476.08. To SHI International Corporation for renewal of Adobe Enterprise software for MIT, $68,502. And to University of South Alabama for fall semester tuition, EMT, and paramedic classes for the fire department, $92,890. 211039, authorize contract with Gorham Air Conditioning for HVAC maintenance and repairs at various city facilities, not to exceed $300,000. 211040, authorize contract with Osprey Initiative for citywide storm water litter collection and analysis services, $500,000. 311041, authorize.
Mr. Dave's?
Are we still under, are we still under, uh, order to do this?
Consent decree?
Yeah. We're just doing that kindness and generosity.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. I was just kidding.
Madam Clerk?
311041, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a notice of award for grant assistance from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, $16,676.51, no local match.
Yeah, I want to take that up today, or just leave it like it is? Yeah, no match.
471042 and 1043 are consider assenting to the vacation of an alley adjacent to property located at 1001 through 1003 Oak Street, and to consider a vacation fee as a condition of the said vacation, $1,739.31. 501044, determine whether the downtown Mobile Business Improvement District shall be continued, modified, or terminated. Announcements.
Counsel?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds?
The, um, downtown Mobile Business Improvement District, we've obviously seen some successes come out of it. But one thing that came to my mind when we were discussing the chapter 25 changes with garbage and trash, was the fact that, uh, these downtown businesses, they, um, say are provided an exceptional level of service at a higher frequency. I think they have pickup, say, daily, uh, at all these businesses, and really what that amounts to is there's, there's all these other businesses that exist throughout the city that are, you know, paying their, their fair share, but they're not quite getting that same level of service. I'd like for us to explore the possibility or opportunity for a portion of this sort of self-taxing that everybody agrees to, to go towards offsetting those additional costs with that additional service that they're getting with garbage and trash.
So, you're talking about the.
He's asking a bid to pay for that.
Oh, a portion of it. It's just so that it's a, so it's a fair deal, that's all.
For some of us that have been around for a long time, uh, there was, once upon a time when the city actually.
For some of us that have been around for a long time, uh, there was once upon a time when the city actually picked up trash or garbage downtown twice a day, not once a day. Um, matter of fact, there was a time when we were picking up once a day that the cans stayed out on the street all day and created such a huge problem for downtown. Uh, so to, for, for us to provide that once a day service for, just for cleanliness is above and beyond reproach. And I think that the city should continue to do what we're doing so that we have a clean, vibrant space down there and not asking anyone else to do it. Uh, I think if it's not broke, let's not fix it right now. Or not even try to fix it.
Yeah, I'd just like to explore that possibility to see what those costs are truly, you know, who, who's getting what in return for the money they're paying? And I think if we, we lay it out, I think we'll see a, a pretty substantial discrepancy that, you know, city resources are being provided at a higher rate for the same or similar amount of investment, say, from the rest of our stakeholders. And I think it's a fair discussion that should be had, that there is this mechanism here, the bound, downtown business improvement district, where, you know, we've already sort of recognized the fact that this is a, a special area that requires additional attention and level of service and that sort of thing. It seems like it would be the perfect sort of mechanism to, to sort of square things up with everybody else outside of uh, the business improvement district. So I think, I think we should explore that possibility. I'm not, I'm not saying that garbage service, say, once or twice a day, or whatever it is, is not necessary. It's certainly necessary, it seems.
So I think we would be happy to have that conversation, but uh, per state law, and Fred Renfrie's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, their money can't be used for baseline services. And I would, I would classify garbage and trash as, as baseline, so.
Well, I, I received reports on my desk that shows the amount of trash and litter and all that sort of stuff that's been, been uh, you know, removed or cleaned up in Downtown Mobile. So maybe there's a different way, it may have to be, well, maybe, but maybe there is a difference. We'll have to look at that, but you know, they do plannings routinely. I'm sure there's a way that we could figure out a way to sort of level things up for the, the taxpayers throughout the city.
We'll be happy to talk with you about it.
Sure.
Follow-up. Since um, we're talking about this, I don't know if everyone here at the table had received any sort of request about possibly exempting houses of worship from, from paying the fees. I had reached out to um, our former counsel attorney because he had at one point, I think working with Levon and maybe Joel, looking at how um, houses of worship could be exempted from, from paying the fees. And um, he had notified Paul about the information that they had looked at originally. And um, Paul sent me back an email saying that he agreed with the original assessment that um, state law does not allow for us to do something like that. So uh, I just wanted to get that out on the table since um, I know I was contacted, I think Ben was contacted. Whether or not we needed to discuss that or not.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Um, back to this baseline services. I would suggest that the baseline service would be once a week. That would be baseline. Anything above that would be sort of additional services because it is a special area. I'm just looking at this sheet here and it shows storm drains cleaned. I mean, certainly there's a level of baseline that comes along with that. Uh, tons of leaves collected, tons of trash collected, you know, all that sort of stuff is sort of, I would say, in the same category as garbage and trash. Um, this uh, the churches not being able to be exempted, can you explore that?
I, 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 I looked at it. It, the, there are two exemptions. There are two exemptions that are in the state law that allow cities to create business interest district of private property owners and certain utilities, companies, personal property. Uh, those are the only two exemptions allowed by state law. And to change the ordinance to something that is not allowed by state law in Alabama is impossible.
Is there a way to say redraw the map where they're drawn out of it?
So the statute, the Alabama statute was amended, I think in nineteen, uh, to allow certain amendments. The uh, the current ordinance has not been amended to incorporate that. But one of the amendments the state law does allow is you to redraw uh, the, the area surrounding. So yes, you could carve out those. There are certain, oh, thank you. There are certain uh, requirements, number of people who have, inside the district have to agree. There's a process to go through that. It can be done, can't be done overnight, but yes, it could be done. But you'd first have to amend the uh, current city ordinance to allow you to amend the ordinance in that manner and then go through that process as set out in the uh, state statute. So the answer is yes, it would be convoluted, but you could do it.
Does it eventually have to go back to the state, though, for them to approve any of these amendments?
No, the, the statute by the state legislature allowed the city to amend their ordinance to include these amendments. So no, you wouldn't have to go back to the state. You would just have to amend the current ordinance to allow you to do these uh, taking out the certain sections of, of, or redrawing the district lines is basically the way they, they put it.
So.
So you wouldn't have to go back to the, you wouldn't have to go back to the state if you went that route. If you wanted to add houses of worship to the exemption list, that you would have to go to the state.
But redrawing the, the bid district, basically.
Yeah, you, you can do. The state statute allows you to do that. You would just have to amend the local ordinance to allow you to do what the state has already allowed you to do.
Convoluted is true.
I, I think, I, I understand the argument, but there are some, I think, important counter arguments. One is, and the most important is that the church, that the houses of worship are getting benefits from the bid. They, they are sharing in those benefits that the bid provides everybody. I think trying to carve out, I mean, with the, with the way the houses of worship are spread about in this area, it'd be very, you'd have to have these islands within, within the district. And the, and the, and the final thing is, I don't know how you're gonna do that. Because if you say, if you say we're gonna exempt houses of worship, the next thing you're gonna find is that, is that Joe's Tap Room becomes a house of worship. So I, I think, I think, I, I think it'd be better if we just left it alone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I agree totally with Joe, what he just stated. I think that um, it's working well. Um, of course, I understand the concern, but it is a benefit um, that houses of worship are receiving. Um, and if you try to do that, you're just creating islands, it's, it's just gonna look ridiculous um, to, to try to make that happen and um, and the, the problem that could cause more issues later. So I agree with Joe.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, let me tell uh, Councilman Joe and Councilman Penn, thank you very much. Y'all both took the words right out of my mouth. Uh, but it goes a little bit further than that because you, uh, the, the church, and when I say the church, I'm not gonna name which one, but there's also multiple pieces of property that are owned by the house of worship within the bid that are profit performing properties. So if you take the house of worship out, are we being exclusive to just the part where the church stands or all the property which they own within the bid? Uh, secondly, uh, when you talk about the baseline service being uh, uh, once a week downtown and, and the city not participating uh, with the limited resources that the bid has and the amount of tax that they collect from the individuals. Uh, if we only pick up once a week, I think we have a mountain of uh, restaurant trash on the streets for a week at a time without the ability to pick it up because of the resources collected through the taxes. Don't amount to the amount of money that's needed to provide the baseline service that you're talking about. So that means that they would have to go back and go back to their property owners and increase that value to them and do all sorts of things that now deter the, the ability to do business downtown. So I think that we'd be creating or doing an unjust harm in trying to pick up or saying, we're only gonna pick it up once a week, but somebody else has to pick it up the other seven next week. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I, I, I wonder if those houses of worship that we're discussing here that are part of the, the bid currently, are they, are they currently paying? Have, have, has anybody been able to collect off of that?
Mr. President, why don't we ask Mr. uh, Fred Renfrie to defend his, to defend himself up here? Been that we continue to ask the questions about what's happening with the bid, let him answer directly.
Yeah, so my question, Fred, thanks for coming, would be, uh, are, are they collecting now from the churches? My understanding that, that Department of Revenue doesn't really know how to handle it.
There are four. Thank you, there are four churches downtown in the Business Improvement District, and the four churches pay. Um, a few years ago, the Revenue Commission began to assess churches and utilities. So heretofore, utilities had not been assessed nor churches. But it's, it's the practice now that, that they are assessed. And yes, we assess and yes, they, they pay and we collect.
Have they always paid?
Yes, ma'am.
So they always have paid?
They have always paid. And, you know, the short journey is, I, I feel like the maturation and evolution of downtown is that we came from like the, you know, more of a college bar scene into more of the, like the restaurant scene. And for a period, there was just a, a lot of trash on the, on the sidewalks on Saturday nights, Sunday mornings. And um, we do a great deal of, of trash collection before the services so that it's not a problem when the parishioners come. It's a strategic initiative where our team goes out to those churches first thing on Sunday mornings to make sure that it's a, a good experience for the guests.
And in regards to the, uh, the garbage and, and trash service, I, I'm sure you can understand sort of my perspective, where I'm coming from and that.
You're right, we get five day a week service downtown and, and in midtown, I get one day a week service. There's, there's no denying that. Yes, sir.
That's right, so um, and, and if that service, say, did not exist, you know, we'd have a significant trash problem.
Right.
To Mr. Carroll's point. All right, I, I just want to explore that possibility of trying to level things up, you know, with everybody else.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
And what else? Anything else from the council? Anything from the administration?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Trying to compare apples and apples and leveling up. If you think of the density of the properties downtown, the sales taxes that are generated in the entertainment, entertainment district. You know, if you're really trying to figure it out, you'd have to determine how much sales tax is generated that's going into the general fund at some point in midtown versus some point in downtown. Other than addressing a, a significant sanitation problem, um, I think that you're probably, dollars and cents, it's probably paying for itself uh, because of the additional money being generated, but I don't know that.
Just per cap, you know, an individual, that would be my point. You know, just an individual business owner who currently, say, pays for a similar level of service out of their operating income versus, you know, somebody downtown where they don't have to pay it out of their operating income. I'm sure if you compared it out, out, you'd probably figure out that there, there's actually a higher level of service being provided to, say, any one business operator versus another. And, and that's what I just want to try to understand and get to the bottom of.
And Councilman Reynolds, Paul and I can get with you in between the meeting as well. Cause I know he's explored things at length, right? So when he's delving into the law, we want to make sure that just because you can do something legal, it doesn't make sense. And when we talk about things versus equality versus equity, we can have that conversation after this meeting.
Our hearts, minds clear? We'll see each other at ten thirty.